I know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. All right, it is 6:30 and I will call the meeting to order. A reminder to everyone who's present, this meeting is being recorded, digitally recorded, so please respect each other as you're speaking, as well as you are listening to each other. Is there anyone here for open session? Okay, then we'll move to the announcements. Katie?
All right, so we had a couple of things that have just recently gone by. On September 9th, there was the 5K for the library. They raised a whopping $3,500, which is really good, and they had 77 runners. There is a video, if you want to see the fun stuff, all the people finishing and who actually won on the YouTube channel for the town, on the Library 5K. It's only about 15 minutes long. But they did a really good job and, you know, a good job to Mark and Al, the Library Committee, everybody that volunteered for that, everybody that ran. Congrats to you all. On September 16th, this past Saturday, was Field Day from 9 to 2. Chris, would you like to talk about it, seeing you're a lion?
Yeah, I mean, it was a great day. We got, well, it wasn't a great day weather-wise, but, you know, we had some cancellations unfortunately, but people did turn out. We sold a lot of chicken dinners. We entertained the town for a good six hours. There was great music. There was good involvement with the people who was there. A lot of the town organizations, they did show up and they brought their bears and they did the best they could to get out, so. We made the most out of a day that wasn't very accommodating weather-wise. It was good. It was good.
Yeah, Hurricane Lee was very unfortunate.
It was very windy.
Yes, very windy, which is never a good thing with tents. But you guys made a go of it, so good job. This coming up weekend, we have the Townwide. If you haven't registered for the Townwide, today's the last day to get on the list. You can email me at thehubbleston250 at gmail dot com. I just need a name and address and I'll respond to you that you're on the list. The list will be online and also available at One Stop Shop, the gas station down there, also known as Mr. Mike's, for all you people that have been around here forever. But it's going to be this Saturday. The weather's looking great. I have a good amount of people on the town yard sale list already. So it starts at about 7:00 and it goes to whenever you get sick of having people come into your yard. So, also coming up on September 30th, bottle and can drive for the Boy Scouts. It'll be at the rec field from 8:00 to noon. So any bottles and cans that you have, five cents returnable, that are sucking up space in your garage, this is a great place to drive through, huck them out at the boys, they'll sort them and take care of them all for you, and all the money goes back to them. So, again, September 30th, 8:00 to noon, at the rec field. And then the following weekend, there is also, they're having a costume fun run, which there's going to be some details coming out. It is a fundraiser for Boy Scouts. It's going to be October 7th with a rain date of the 8th. It starts at 10:00 AM. The goal is, is everyone show up in costumes and we're going to race around High Street and come back to the rec field. It's for fun. I think they're going to have some basic, like, you know, first place, like little medallion prizes or something to give out, but it is a fundraiser for the Boy Scouts. So, please enter. You can get more information on the Boy Scout Facebook page, I'm guessing. Or you can reach out to me. I can get you some information because I know the people. So, the other thing that's happening that weekend is non-such night, October 7th, from, starting at 4:00, we're going to have food, music, and we're going to be showing the Lego Movie, which is from 2014. And I will tell you, I watched it again with the kids, and it has a lot of political undertones, and I don't care if you sit on the left or you sit on the right. You watch this movie, it makes even more sense nowadays. So...
What's that date on that?
It's going to be October 7th with a rain date of the 8th at 4:00 PM. We start out from 4:00 to 6:30 with food and music. So if you just want to come and get some food or listen to a band, we're going to have ASB playing, which is a soul funk rhythm and blues band. That will be going on at that point. We will have fire pits this year because last year was freezing, so I've gotten some fire pits so we can stay warm. And then we'll be at DUS showing the Lego Movie. So bring your camp chairs. Again, this is free to enter, as always, free to park whenever we have these fun things at the rec field.
Do you have food vendors again this week?
I know Jacmo's is coming. The Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts are coming. I'm still working on, I think the diner might be coming. They talked about doing some grilled cheese or something, but I'm going to follow up with them.
And the cannoli people?
Hmm?
The cannoli people came last year.
Uncle Joey, Jesus. Yeah, we'll see who else comes. But yeah, so we have the Girl Scouts doing, I think, smores and hot cider, and the Boy Scouts usually do popcorn and things like that. So it'll be fun. It's a nice community event. And again, it's the Lego Movie, and if you haven't watched it in a while, come on down and watch it. It makes even more sense now.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the superintendent's time, could you please take the Quavon Chiller project out of order?
Sure. This is item 6 under Old Business. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it, and we're happy that we, as a group, your group and our group have finally been able to have a win situation, working together with the school district, and I appreciate you coming. So, turn it over to you.
Would you like to say a few words on the initial agreement?
Superintendent Muha, for those of you who are here, the new superintendent of Quavon Regional.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for actually bringing the issue to our attention. And so, this, as I'm sure you've all read it, it's been in your packet. It's a one-time, non-precedent setting. We're over at OCAM tonight, having them sign it as well. Our last board of selectmen is scheduled to sign it October 2nd. At that time, we'll date it together. We just didn't think it made sense to try and pull everybody to one meeting like last time. We figured this was better. So I'm going to ask that you sign it in your most legible signature as it be, and then we need the town seal on it as well.
Yep. They will need to vote on this first, then any questions?
We'll need a motion to sign the IMA.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to sign the IMA for the QRSD Chiller.
Second?
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Yes.
Post. Motion carried.
That's as good as it gets.
Pretty legible.
Yes, it's super legible.
I bet a print.
Yeah, she said penmanship, county.
That is my signature. I'm sorry.
We'll print your name next week.
Yeah, you can, that's, I actually had a lawyer one time at a closing, asked me, "Is this your real signature?" Like, what the hell does that mean? Yes. Like, that's not okay. Wait a minute.
Let's talk to the lawyers.
I know. Yes.
Teachers who can read.
Yeah, perfectly.
Speaking as reading.
Sounds like you have a lot of fun family stuff planned upcoming.
We, this town, we do. We have a lot of stuff going on always. We have, and that just brings us to the beginning of October. There's more stuff all the way through October, but I didn't want to suck up. Everybody's fun time. Let's just, let's, we give it little increments at a time. What's coming up right now? All right. Put some muscle into it, or else it doesn't work.
He doesn't trust you after you practice.
No, you gotta stand up. Get it, like, put your body weight in it.
It's like the original seal, the inception of the town.
Yeah, we need a new seal at some point.
No, that's the original. Do you want me to hold it?
He's having trouble.
Now it's going to be a double seal.
Dude, just put it on the paper. Don't even worry about putting it over the thing.
Doesn't have to be anywhere special. Just stamp it.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Well, that was easy.
I guess that's it. Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I dragged my husband with me just for the fun of the big date night for us. He doesn't seem like he has much.
You gotta have protection.
You don't think so?
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll go back to, before we start, item 4. Are you folks, how many of you are here concerning the quorum discussion? Okay, when we get the discussion going, et cetera, the way it will work is, we will have the board, anyone on the board who wants to speak, speak. We will certainly recognize you, but you'll be limited to two minutes each, okay? Which you might find will be, it will be a long time, okay? But, and respectfully, we'll cut you off, okay? Just so everybody can get, get the time. Renee, why don't you have a seat before we start. I got a statement I want to make anyway, but come join us.
Thank you.
This is Renee Lafayette, the town moderator.
Good evening, Renee.
Evening. How are you?
Oh, just, okay, I see you brought your pen and your highlighter.
I did. I did well, you know?
Okay. So before we start the discussion on the item, I do want to make a statement, if I could, respectfully, not only for the benefit of those of you who are here, but those of you who are hopefully watching the meeting. So I'd like to comment on the, first of all, on the misinformation that has been going around town concerning this particular topic and the select board members. To some of the things that I'm aware of, for example, what we are not, we are not communistic. We are not conspirators out to pass a fast one on this town. We are not and have not passed or decided to pass the quorum for town meeting to nine people. Hopefully, those of you who are listening, will take note of that. What we are, we're citizens and taxpayers in Hubbardston, mothers, fathers, husbands, wives, raising children who care and love deeply our tiny town of Hubbardston. We serve and we give our time freely, trying to do what we feel is right and what is best for the citizens that we serve in the town of Hubbardston. A teacher coming through now on me, a brief education on what exactly is a select board in town government and how do we operate and function. First of all, we are all duly elected by the citizens of Hubbardston for a period of three-year terms. In our case, Hubbardston, we have a five-member board. Some towns have three. In fact, we were three when I first came on the select board. All members of the select board are equal. Each has only one vote. We have a chairperson that's elected by the board to run meetings and to put together agendas for these meetings. Any and all select board members, if they have any item or issue or questions that they would like to discuss or gather information, they may ask for that item, issue, or question to be put on the agenda, and it will be included on the agenda for discussion. All policies, administrative issues are in the purview of the select board. Agenda items, issues, and questions that are discussed, excuse me, do not necessarily lead to or require a vote to add, subtract, or have any action at all. The discussion is enough. We are gathering information, weighing it to enable us to better do our job that we are elected to do. I am very proud to be the chairman of this particular select board. All, and I repeat, all very hardworking, devoted, and dedicated individuals who want only what is best for our town of Hubbardston and its citizens. Thank you very much. I would like to once again invite and recognize the town moderator and moderator, and would like to make this point because there are people who weren't certain about this. The town moderator is a resident of Hubbardston and is also duly elected to serve as moderator. With that, this is Renee Lafayette. We will start the discussion and we'll open it up to the board, to anyone who wants to kick it off.
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to go first.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Sure. So, if I recall correctly, and you know, my memory is just one of five or one of six, if you include Nate, who's been in these meetings and so forth, the original conversation of the quorum came up a while back. I don't remember what generated it, but I remember the sense that we were talking about the concern of making sure we get people to participate. We wanted more people to come out. For folks who've been watching our meetings for a while, you'll remember, you may remember back to when we had David, and we had numerous conversations with upcoming elections, upcoming town meetings, and the concern that people didn't know what was happening in town. We'd have a town meeting and people would be on social media afterwards and be upset that they didn't know about it. We'd have an election with a lower turnout, people would be upset about it. We started working with David to try to reach out to Code Red, which is our emergency alert system to try to notify more people, to get more people to come out. We've tried to use social media. I know I've even talked to Nate about looking at, you know, Girl Scouts or other opportunities to have someone be present at town meetings so we can have more parents with kids. Those who've seen my face at town meeting, no, we bring our child with us because we're both actively involved, and it's hard to get a babysitter sometimes. You know, we have an almost two-year-old running around at town meeting because it's so important for us to be there. We bring him with us, and sometimes he tries to hop, right? So, but we know that not everyone has that opportunity, and we want to get more people involved. So when we go back to the beginning of this discussion, the whole intent of the discussion, from my memory anyway, was the idea of how do we get more people involved. There was initially concern about the actual turnout of the meetings. I'm going to be the first to tell you, I was wrong. I didn't realize, looking at the history that I didn't have in front of me at the time when we had this conversation, I think we started at a working session, and that's the first recollection I had of it. I didn't realize that we actually haven't really had issues with quorums. A lot of small towns do, where you have to sit there, wait for like an hour or two until you do call after call, until you get enough people to come. The idea of reducing the quorum to nothing or a lower number, the concept was getting people to be, want to be proactive. Well, we definitely got people proactive. I don't think that was necessarily our intent to have the activity we had, but the idea is to bring attention to town government and get more people involved. So at least from where I'm standing, the whole perspective I had was, what do we do to get more people involved? And obviously, you know, there's been a lot of people who've been very upset about this, and lots of discussion and so forth, and I want to personally apologize. I was wrong in the original direction I took, and I see that with the responses. I'm glad so many people have responded, and I'm hoping people stay active. But maybe we can, you know, move forward and get that into a proactive way, whether it's getting more people to town meeting, whether it's getting more people on boards and committees. But from my perspective at least, you know, based on the feedback we've heard, I think, and the stats and the numbers we have in front of us, I'm comfortable with leaving the quorum where it is.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the board?
So yeah, I'd like Chris to talk about it a little bit. I'm the one that brought it up. And I brought it up because there are challenges. The numbers you see are reflective of the gyrations we have to go through to get people to these meetings. Eddie alluded to making calls to get involvement. Five different ways we post these meetings for citizens to see them and react to them and come to meetings. And it's disappointing to me that we still struggle to get numbers. We struggle to get, by some loose math, 4% of the voting population to these meetings. And sometimes we have to make the calls and have friends call friends, just to get the quorum and delay meetings, and even once we have to cancel a meeting. So the message that's sending to me is that people just really aren't involved. They're not involved and they're not interested. Well, if you're not interested, you know, why are we going through the gyrations to get you there? Let's lower the quorum so that the people who are interested can get there. And we're not denying anybody a vote. We'd love 3,200 voters to be there, but when we can't get them, when we can barely get 4% or 5%, it's disappointing. It's, you know, it's challenging. So why don't we lower the limit so we can ensure an on-time meeting, a quorum, a viable meeting, and move forward and get the job done in a timely manner? You know, the message you're sending to the select board with these numbers here on this list is that there really isn't much interest. Yet we've tried five different ways, time and time again, to get people involved. So, you know, my idea was lower the quorum so we can have meetings timely and efficiently.
I might add, the numbers that Chris and Heather both are referring to, because I realize you folks don't have it in front of you, our clerk gave us all the numbers going back to 2000 for the number of registered voters that attended the town meeting, as well as the number of registered voters that we had for quorum. And for your own benefit, when we were first discussing this, I had asked for some numbers just because I was concerned about the percentage. We are a population now of 4,203 people, according to the latest, when I first started on the board, it was around 4,900. Don't ask me what happened to the other 700 people, but that's what it was about 11 years ago. We have 3,520 registered active voters. Okay, that's, a quorum right now for us is 50, and that equals 1.4% of the population of the registered voters. 1.4 is the quorum. So that even with a quorum at 50, we are talking about certainly a small number of registered voters making the decisions for everybody, but it is what it is. We are a small town. I put this forth because simply, to me, the numbers were startling when I first got into this because it bothered me when the number nine was discussed. I just said I have a hard time, and I do, of having less than 1% of the registered voters making the decisions for the town. But this has been our concern all along from all of us, as Heather put it, and as Chris was putting it. What our concern was, was to try to get the town more involved and representative. And so these are the numbers that we're talking about, should you wonder. Okay?
Yeah, I'd like to...
Peter, go ahead.
I'm going to play my tongue, but I'm going to speak a little bit. So, our past meeting that we had prior to this one, and there was no vote taken. There was just an agreement to move this discussion forward to tonight. According to what some of you might have read, it seemed like you guys read that there was a vote taken. There was no vote taken. We just agreed to discuss it tonight. So I don't know where y'all got your information, but you might want to check yourself. And I said right on video, I wanted to see the numbers, where they fell. I wasn't for it. I wasn't against it. I wanted to discuss it. I wanted to see the numbers. Well, numbers are here. I was at the meeting the night. There was an issue, but that's only one time out of 20 years. So I'm fine where it is. 50 is good to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, have anything you would say?
I'm still at, I don't think it should change. I understand these numbers. I don't like these numbers. I wish they were higher, but we mean 50. I think 50 honestly is too low. Personally, I would love to see, like some of you others said, a lot more people. We try really hard to get people. We do send out stacks of flyers, mailers. We do send out emails usually, and the phone calls, and it's on the electronic side, and we do this and we do that. And we try really hard to get people. It's posted in certain places to get everyone to come out. Every time, we always do here, I didn't get the flyer. No, that was never sent. I didn't get the phone calls, and I understand that. I hear it very loud and clear because I'm usually the first one that gets beat up on social media for something, because, or by email, because I'm the most easily contacted person in this town, unfortunately. So, but I still am going to be exactly like I said, the last go-around is, I don't want any part of changing the quorum. I think that it's a bad idea. I am highly against using a COVID mechanism that has nothing to do with COVID to change it. If you really want to change the quorum, then it should go in front of the people at a town meeting and be voted on by the people, not us making the decision for the entire town. And that's where I stand. I'm against that.
Okay, thank you. Renee, we asked you to be here as because if a quorum were going to be changed, you would be very significant because for the benefit of the people, if quorum were going to be put up to change, the town moderator has to agree to it, number one. If he or she doesn't, it's a dead issue. So, as the others were saying, we discussed this earlier, and we wanted to get more information. We wanted numbers, and we wanted the town moderator to be here, which is where we all are tonight. So Renee, if there's anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to be here in the reversed role because usually I am the one who is presiding, but it's with a real sense of our shared love for and our collective decision to live here in Hubbardston, that I'm happy to be here and share some thoughts with you and members of the select board, and certainly the general public. As I come to this position, not just as the moderator, have gavel will travel, no. I come to it as a student of government, as someone who has studied parliamentary law and practiced it for the last 40 years in various capacities. I care, as we all do, and that cannot be overemphasized. I think that if the goal was to bring this to the forefront and to make people think about town meeting and think about the future of Hubbardston, you have succeeded. I know that I have received, as I'm sure you all have collectively or individually, communications, emails, letters from constituents of ours, our fellow townspeople. When I say constituents, it sounds like they're far away. They're not. They're our neighbors. And I agree. I agree with the comment that it's overwhelmingly, quite candidly, it's unanimously negative. But it has made people think. And having reviewed and re-reviewed and re-reviewed again, the video of the September 5th meeting, I think that you raised valid points, Mr. Burigo. And I understand your frustration. I understand also, Ms. Young, your reluctance, your hesitancy. I strike that, your disdain for changing the quorum numbers. And I have to say that I am a firm believer, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And in this case, I think that the meeting in question was the special town meeting of October 21st, 2019, where we eked by with 50 as the quorum. A comment was made at the September 5th meeting about perception and reality, and without getting too deep in that, because I've watched it too many times, perception becomes reality, and this is an honorable board. I only know you through our respective roles in town government, but this is an honorable board, and this is an honorable town. And to move forward with such a dramatic decrease in the quorum, like it or not, it certainly would set off red flags with most people. I think it's logical, and it's not logical because of what has happened here in this town. There is no track record that I'm aware of, of misdeeds, of misfeasance in office, but when you look at the big picture, and we all do, guess what? They must be up to something. I will say that maybe it's time for a different approach. Maybe we should consider changing the date of the annual town meeting, of special town meetings, from instead of during the work week to a Saturday. I know I personally am not a fan anymore of driving at night, and although it's under two miles from my home to here, the deer don't know that. So not wanting to fill my antelus deer tag that way, I tend to get a little hesitant. So not wanting to fill my antelus deer tag that way, I tend to get a little hesitant. So why not a Saturday? Why not make it ten in the morning? My former home of Lunenburg, that's what they do. Excuse me. If we were to look to our neighbors to the north, and I'm not talking about Gardner, I'm talking about Vermont, they still, in 2023, make town meeting the social highlight of the year. I won't go that far. But maybe a different day, maybe a different time, maybe enlist a marked bus and pick up people at pre-designated spots. Let's make it as easy as possible, short of, short of, and I'll talk about law enforcement in a moment, short of my authorizing the chief to arrest residents on sight and physically haul them before town meeting, and then, of course, we'll set them free. I will also say that probably one of the most innovative emails and imaginative emails that I received, and I believe everyone was copied on that, was from Mr. Blanchard, who I have not had the pleasure of meeting in person. But he is, well, I will not slander him, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to commend him with his recommendation that we run a fifty-fifty. If that's what it takes, that's what it takes. Let's think outside the box, let's be imaginative, let's be, let's try and marshal all of our good thoughts, and let's get those numbers up. But, and I guess in light of my unique position here, as far as if the COVID, I'll call it the COVID law were to be used as the mechanism to lower the quorum, let me stop the suspense, I do not agree with lowering the quorum under that mechanism for the reasons that I have stated. I will go so far as to say this, however, and I think it has to be said. Attendance at and participation in the annual and special town meeting of any town, but I'm not worried about any town, let's talk about our town, is the heart of a civically healthy, civically healthy and transparent community, a vibrant community. And I ever, the optimist, I believe that it can be, and maybe not overnight, but I think it can be. And what do we have to lose as far as giving it a try? On the other hand, I don't believe if the quorum were ever lowered, that it could ever be increased. That, I think, is going to be fait accompli. I have to also take this opportunity to thank the town administrator and the town clerk for having gathered the statistics as far as the last twenty-three years of special and annual town meetings. That was very helpful. And minus closing comments, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Renee. Are there any questions for Renee from the board? I will put this out to you folks. You certainly have the opportunity, should you still continue to want to comment on the issue. You've gotten a feel of the board right now, as well as the moderator, so that obviously it was not the intent for tonight, but there will be no action taken for all the reasons that I explained to you before. But if you are here, you took the time to be here, you certainly may have the opportunity to speak, so if you would like to, again, we'll limit it to two minutes, yes?
I would like to take a moment to shamelessly plug that there are plenty of boards and committees available to join here in Hubbardston.
You are shameless.
So if you would like to, they're all on the website, please take a look. Seeing you here tonight is wonderful, so please check them out.
So with that, again, if you would like to, or maybe you don't want to speak, but maybe you have a question for anyone on the board or for the town moderator, but if you are, we will limit you to two minutes, so that when two minutes is up, I will interrupt you, so please respectfully accept I'm simply keeping track of the time, all right? So would you like, would you state your name, please, and your address?
Jocelyn Denine, 23 Cruz Road. And I, first of all, want to compliment the town administrator. In the time since you've been here, it's added a notable layer of transparency, particularly through the website for me, and there's a lot, the only issue is getting through it all. There's a lot there, and I'm still learning to navigate the site to figure out where things are, but I find that very helpful. I did listen to the September-third, September-fifth board meeting, and Mr. Pereggo specifically referenced his thought of reducing the quorum as a quote-unquote tactic to drive attendance to town meeting. So by that same, I had the thought that by the same measure, the quorum could be increased, and that would in fact force people to come to town meeting because we would need a quorum in order to do any business. So the fact that it was reduced, I'm dead set against. I did agree with one of the commenters from the bench that the number in any case is arbitrary, it's not tied to a rule. So the number fifty is arbitrary as well. I'm absolutely dead set against reducing it. I could easily be in favor of increasing it. The other point that I'd like to make, to support Mr. Pereggo in using a tactic to drive attendance, I'm not in favor of changing the quorum, but I am in favor of looking at tactics to increase attendance. And I agree with the moderator's suggestions. In addition, looking at what obstacles keep people from attending town meeting, one of them is childcare. I know having a two-year-old running around at town meeting is not the optimum situation for anyone.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
And who?
And thank you. Okay. Sir, would you state your name and your address?
My name is Paul Flag with two G's, Nine Never Green Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts. So there's been a problem, or it would affect, people might say, a challenge, in getting a quorum at town meetings forever. I mean, pick the eighties, pick the nineties, I don't have the numbers, but I read all the meetings, you'd see the same problem. It's been very consistent in town that there's smoke. You got nineteen ninety, you got this, you only go back to two thousand. I'm just saying, you'd see the same kind of data if you went back another twenty years. That's all I'm saying there.
So it's basically been the same for thirty years, forty years?
I've been here, I've done all this stuff. It's been the same, it's been a challenge, it's been a problem. I'm not sure how you address it. Some of the moderator's suggestions sounded like good things to try to me. We weren't creative enough at the time to cope with some of those. When things happen, people get interested, they come to the town meetings. If you can make something happen that's different, you'll get people's attention, maybe that 'll help drive up the town meetings. And I want to make a last comment on your notice about using the COVID regulations. So when I saw that, immediately red bells went off, they're red and they're bells. I can assure you, a large, a very large percentage of the older people in town at least, of whom I'm unfortunately one now, read that or saw you do that, and they would assume with a high level of confidence on their part that, uh-oh, what are these guys and ladies up to? I assure you, that would be the response. That was my response. That was why I originally got involved in a whole bunch of town stuff a long time ago.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right.
Jesse Bracko, 28 High Street. I would just like to express my dismay that this is being discussed, reducing the town quorum for any reason tonight. Simply seems undemocratic to me. I appreciate, Katie, you standing up at a very early time and saying that you were opposed to that, and if the quorum is ever changed, I think it should be done at town meeting. And I never think that coercion of any sort is an appropriate method. I think there's a lot of interest in politics in this town, and people do show up when there are things that are really important to them, as you see tonight and as you've heard on comments and emails that you've received. And I don't, if, I think Renee said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But I fully support many of the suggestions, especially changing the date to Saturdays, I think would be very helpful, providing a marked bus for people who can't drive, and childcare, I think would be a good idea.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, just state your name and address, please?
John, I would work forty High Street. Just what he was, the moderator was saying about changing to Saturdays, maybe? I don't know about everyone, but I work five twelve-hour days, if not more, during the week. So to come out at seven o'clock at night after working all day in the rain and cold isn't the best thing, so maybe like a Saturday at ten o'clock in the morning would really be beneficial to a lot of people, a lot of families, especially I have to get home and make dinner and get the kids in bed, or all sense of the issue. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Just to speak to this topic, I will have to confirm a special town meeting could be held at any time that the Select Board shows, also on a Saturday. I believe the annual town meeting being on a Saturday would require some sort of changes to the bylaw.
It would.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Beth Sahoski, Burches, forty-three Burches Road. I just have a question. If the Select Board decides to lower the quorum to nine percent, is there a state overlook to see if that's appropriate, or can the board just decide to do it themselves?
No, as I, I'm sorry, as I already stated before, turning it over to you folks, number one, the moderator has said no, so that would stop it right there. But listening to the board members also, it's fairly evident they're not in favor of it, so it's not going anyplace.
At this time, I'm just wondering to have an answer to the question, should it be decided by the Select Board and then the moderator? Is there a state overlook at what the town does?
So under this current version of the law that has things to do with COVID and health precautions in terms of town meeting, it would have to go to the moderator, to the Select Board, and then to the Office of the Attorney General. Nowhere within that law did it state that the Attorney General's office had a choice, but they would have to make sure that everything was legal and upstanding. When you're doing a normal general bylaw change, it also has to go in front of the Select Board and Finance Committee, in front of town meeting, and then to the Office of the Attorney General. Sometimes they take their time with it, like we have not received back the battery energy storage system upgrade from two years ago, because they have their questions and it goes back and forth. So yes, there is a extra layer of protection passed the residents of Hubbardston.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name's Nicole, I'm on one-eleven Old Westminster Road, and I would just like to say, I agree with the whole idea of doing things on a Saturday because I, well, don't have a nine-to-five. Coming to meetings is difficult on a weekday. And I do think, somebody else spoke upon refreshments, we have tons of little businesses in town that could potentially contribute, who would enjoy that, I think, with refreshments and such. And just overall, bringing this town back to what Hubbardston originally is, because I've lived here my whole life. And there's been a lot of changes that are good, a lot of changes that are kind of like, what has this town become? And so if you bring people in and give them good reasons, but also coercing them to come in is not the best tactic either. So maybe we could just make it easier for people to get things in.
Thank you very much.
I don't have a comment, I just have a question.
Okay, but we should see if anyone else speaks first, and then I'll be happy to come back to you, okay? Please.
Rosemary Southwick, twenty Williams Hill Road. I just want to thank the Selectmen. This is the first time I've seen an upset on the internet with, unfortunately, you were attacked. And if everybody read their comments, or the comment before the comment, you know, you'd get a better look at the Facebook page. Same thing happened in the seventies, except we used telephones. And if there was an issue in town and you needed to go to the town meeting, you went, and it was like wildfire, didn't matter. It's just same people, same time, same presence, except you use the internet instead of a telephone, or you actually go to your neighbor and talk to them. So I don't think you're looking at any way to change people's reasoning for going to meetings, except they have a cause and they have a purpose. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, and you're a great board.
Thank you very much. Who else? Anyone else? Yes, sir, please.
If I could just second...
Could you give us your name and address?
Joshua Preville, twenty-eight Shrew Road. Because I've only been in Hubbardston for a few years, but I do think that a great point was raised here, and I think in general, I think the town as a whole, really, I can't speak very many certainly, but I think when things go well, people are happy, and when folks feel uncomfortable with something, they tend to brush up against it, it's just human nature. So some of us are always going to go to the town meeting because we love local government, we think this is amazing part of America. I think the feedback that has come through a lot tonight, which I think if you surveyed the town, you'd get a lot more confirming that, is when folks have to decide between all of the other things they're juggling in a society that's getting busier and busier it seems, if things are going okay, they tend to not go to the meeting. And I think that, you know, it speaks to even this meeting, any kind of involvement, there's going to be people who are always interested, always reading agendas and minutes and joining. Thank you.
I'm stopping you on this one. If I'm doing this, I'm saying that's one minute, so I'm sorry if this was misunderstood, that's just you had a minute to go.
I don't think I have anything further, just basically confirming, I think that, you know, Mr. Moderator had a lot of great ideas, that whether or not they can come to fruition, you know, that obviously needs to be looked into, but small adjustments like that could really make it easier for a lot of people to attend, and certainly work is, I think, probably the biggest hindrance to people making it to any of these meetings or anything else. I mean, my wife was going to come, she couldn't make it, she had to work late, tonight, just an example. So anyways, that's all.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate that. Anyone else?
Well, thank you for pointing out that my fifty...
Your name?
Atlanta is twenty-three East Conlon Park Road, I should know that by now. Yes, I likewise have full respect for this board, and maybe that's part of the reason why a lot of people don't go to town meetings, because they trusted you to make good decisions. So that could be. My first suggestion was to be free beer and wine, and I thought that would get probably double the quorum. But I've heard from all the members of the board, but I'd like to hear it from you, Chris, as to now that you have all this information, all the feedback, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are to lower the quorum. I'm hearing a lot of reasons, a lot of reasons, why people can't get there. It's one meeting a year. I think you should be able to carve out the time, make the plans. It's your American right to go and vote, you know? Why should we have to lure people with snacks and treats and goodies to come? It's what America's all about. You shouldn't have to be coaxed into coming to town meeting. They're announced well in advance. You should be able to make plans to accommodate childcare or adult daycare, or whatever your needs are. I think...
So you still support reducing the quorum after all this information?
I support having the ability to have a timely vote, first time, one time. I don't want anybody to be denied their vote, I want them to come out and vote. And I think what I'm hearing now is that we need to bribe people to come to town meeting, coax them to come to town meeting, do special things to get them there. And I don't think, I don't think that should be necessary. I don't think we should have to go through the gyrations we go through to have town meeting and have people come out and vote. I just don't think we should. I don't think we should have to.
I'll just finish up. I think you're misrepresenting the problem because the statistics don't show that. The one meeting that was fifty and we just made a quorum was during COVID. Let me make the last example. So we reduce it to nine, so five select board members go, and I get four of my friends to go. So we have ten people there. And we decide that we're going to make a ridiculous cost to the town. And it gets approved. Is that, is that what we'd be looking at if we did it for nine? I rest my case. Thank you for listening.
First time, then I'll come back. Do you want to speak again? Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Rita Carlow, Burches Road. I'm, I'm in agreement with changing the date and the time. I personally went around talking with my neighbors. And I am going to be passing out information as much as I can. But I'm, it's, it's because of the day and the time. It's, these meetings are hard to get to. I'm, I'm, I've been out straight myself. Almost fell asleep when I got home, but I'm here. But I, I totally agree with Mr. Moderator, right? Think the date and the time needs to be changed. I don't know about all this other stuff, but a mark bus for our elderly or whoever doesn't have transportation, I think that would be pretty good, too.
Can I make one point, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So what I think people should really remember is, yes, tonight, there seems to be a group of people that could make it on a Saturday morning. But if you change it to a Saturday morning, suddenly Little Johnny has soccer. And there is a large variety of people that could never make it then. I've looked at all this stuff until I'm blue in the face and worked in communities that had it at night and in the morning and on the weekends. And no matter what, it's the issue that brings the people out. People that really care will find their way there. So there's only so much we can truly do. And I really do, I really will work with the clerk and the moderator and the select board to look into ways that we can sweeten the pot to get people to town meeting. But no matter what, there's going to be another side to that quorum.
Okay, first time?
Yep.
All right.
Sarah Nichols, nine Evergreen Road. So whether or not you're sweetening the pot, changing the date, doing whatever, there's enough people. Looking at these numbers, the meetings have happened. And maybe you had to wait a little bit, but they happened. Fifty people or more were there. There's no need to change it. If it's not broke, don't fix it. It may be inconvenient for you and frustrating and make you mad, but it's working, so why change it? And if those fifty people are the only ones that show up and have their say on whatever day of the week it is, good for them. Fifty people is what you need, not nine.
Thank you very much. First time people, anyone who hasn't had a chance, you folks on the left here?
Um, so I have maybe like possibly like a suggestion.
Would you?
Name and address.
Oh, yes.
Name and address, please.
We went through this multiple times. Um, I'm Katie Alden, twenty-four Street Road.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if there's like a way on the website that like we can sign up and like submit to get like a reminder that meetings are coming up. So like I've actually.
Yes, million and one times. I have posted it and said about it and everything else. There's a little subscribe button you can hit on the town website to subscribe to emails.
Okay.
There's also a, it's right now on the electronic sign. You can go to the Rutland Regional.
Dispatch?
Dispatch and get reverse, yeah, the phone calls coming to you. Granted, you're going to get them for Warren and everywhere else, but you won't.
You can opt out of that.
You can opt out of that.
Yeah, you can, okay. I haven't done, gone that far. I was like, why am I getting Warren crap? Uh, but yeah, you can get a phone call, you can get an email directly sent to you. I post about it at least, what, once a month on Facebook, on Hubbardston People about this?
Not always.
Yes, I know, I know. And it's on Instagram and I, yes. And that's the problem is if you don't subscribe, you don't see it. And I, I get it, you're never going to see everything and we're always going to miss somebody. And somebody didn't get the mailer because their spouse threw it away. There's always a reason, just like some people, Saturday is better, other people, there's soccer. It's, I don't know, there is no magic answer to this.
And on both services, you can choose what you like to hear about. Like, if you want to hear about town meeting, but you don't want to hear about emergencies, then you can choose those options, even down to the different boards that you want to hear from. If you want to hear from the select board but not the Board of Health, you can make that option.
Yeah, definitely do the town clerk, because that's where you get the.
Before, have anyone else?
No, have, have.
Yeah. All right, now, second time round, this gentleman, excuse me, I'm just trying to remember the, the hands I saw. You, ma'am, you'll be second. And you'll be third and fourth, fifth, okay? So, yes, sir, go ahead.
A question. So it's my understanding, and just want to double check that it's correct. My understanding is that the mechanism that had been being discussed by the board to make this change is, you know, a pandemic COVID regulation that allows smaller groups for all the reasons. That you have smaller groups associated with a pandemic. And that this regulation or law, I don't know its official status, lasts until 2025, sometime in 2025. Once that time period has passed, the process to make quorum changes in the future after that date is what these days? And I plead ignorance because I don't know.
Town meeting.
That's what I thought. That's what it's always been, but I just want to be sure there hadn't been something that had changed that I wasn't aware of in my, admittedly, lack of attendance to the town.
General, general bylaws, simple majority, zoning bylaws, two-thirds majority.
That's the same as it always was.
So, and just keep note, too, that sometimes what's happened with some of the COVID regulations is they start out as a COVID regulation and the legislature takes them up and makes them something permanent. So just because this is currently COVID, and I have no idea what direction the legislature is going to go with this, but come 2025, they could extend or they could convert it over.
At present, it's COVID only, and that's the mechanism that would allow this to happen and not go through a normal town meeting.
Well, they get started during COVID, but they've extended it, right? So I know we're calling it a COVID regulation because that's when it originated, but the legislature has already taken an active step to extend it beyond that period of time. They've done that with some things, right? Like remote meetings is a good example.
How long was it originally for until?
It was, it's been re-upped a couple of times since its original intent.
So they did it for a year, then extended it for a year, then another two years or whatever, that type of, that type of scenario. Mainly because of the unknown factor of COVID itself.
So they can stay on and do their work.
Well, I think that was part of it, but again, you know, I, I reference people over to other things, right? Like remote meeting participation. That originally had an expiration date. They've extended it a few times, and now I think it's extended again.
Certainly almost the same time as this.
So it's one of those things that, you know, I think a lot of the active groups are working behind the scenes. A lot of the advocates for like town managers like Fords and so forth, where eventually I think you'll see that the remote participation thing is likely to become a permanent regulation where it's permitted.
So then just my last comment on that. If at some point in the next two years, the board should feel the need to try to move ahead with this and use the COVID mechanism to make a change like this. As a number of people have said, you have people come when they care, when they get excited, when they think there's something going on. I would suggest that you hold a special town meeting, that you're going to make the quorum change, and here's what we're changing it to. And I suspect you'd get a significant amount of attendees to vote it down.
So, sir, even in this, if we were to go in this fashion, we would have had to, after this evening, hold a public meeting. And so there were plenty of options for this to be shot down.
I didn't say public meeting, I said town meeting.
No, but he's saying.
We could, we could have as well. I also don't want anyone to think any of this was done to be alarmist or to be difficult. I was asked by Mr. Parego during a discussion of the entire board to explore ways that we could look at the quorum. There were two ways present at that time, the way we're talking about and the normal way. I brought that back for discussion as I would do for any member of the select board or any resident that asks any type of question within means, within reasonable means.
And there is no state law, for example, that says a certain percentage has to be the quorum for people, for town meetings. It's an open number that's decided by that community.
I understand that.
So it is a flexible type thing, but.
I understand that.
All right, then, are you done, sir?
Yes.
Okay, you, you would be second, yes?
Okay, just, just real quick, and I appreciate all the work that you do. And I understand that you're never going to make anybody happy. And I am a town meeting attendee and have been since I've lived in this community since nineteen ninety. The thing as a voter and as a taxpayer is that after all the mandatory spending is spent, the schools being at least fifty percent of our budget, and then everything else that we do as a voter, I say to myself, ten percent of my town budget I get to vote on? Why bother coming? So there's frustration maybe on the community's side. After everything is spent, we have this much to vote on. Thank you.
Technically, you get to vote on the entirety of the budget, but it would be a, it would be a difficult haul.
But to, to your point, the, the school budget part is a very important part that whether you are for or against, because it goes up every single year, we need the votes there, too.
I know it goes up every single year.
Can you wait? Because I promised people in the order. Oh.
The school, when you said the school?
Yes.
And, you know, yeah, I'm old, but we used to do line item budget. And the school was line item. And the more line items we didn't do in the budget, the more they took. So, oh, you can imagine, meetings were until midnight.
Yeah.
Back in the day.
At least, or that would take a couple of days now.
Seventies, eighties, and it was, I mean, it was a fun place to be because it was exciting. But you voted on every line. Now it's a number, like Washington DC, it's a number. And you have to see the one eighty-five, and it's another line. And that's, that money goes there and the other money goes in another place. It's not distinctive of, except for salaries and things like that. So we don't get the information on the schools anymore. You don't give us the line item. They just say, give us six million dollars and we'll be happy. So, you know, that would be interest if we could publicize in big writing a line item for each school and explain it to the people. Then they'd know what was going around.
If we get the line item budget, we're happy to share it.
Well, you know what, we're the voters, we should be able to get it. It shouldn't be.
We've been trying for a few years.
I know, but.
The changes, we'll keep trying. But the.
We always used to get a line item.
Right.
All right, I don't want to get off on a tangent on this because there are people who are waiting to speak, all right? But thank you, appreciate that. You'll be next.
Yes, I just had a quick question. There was two, two references to gyrations that the board goes through in regard to announcing, informing of town meeting. And I'm just, it's a disparaging word, and I'm wondering what that means, define gyrations.
Who said gyrations?
Mr. Parego.
It's the way, it's the way we, five different ways we send out announcements of town meetings.
And which of those are mandated anyway?
I'm, I'm not sure which ones are mandated, but it's five different ways that's available to everybody in this town who's interested in going to a meeting to be aware of it.
That's fine, but is that a gyration?
Some of them were alluded, alluded to here.
The only thing that is mandated is that the meeting be posted, that's it.
Okay. But I'm, is it truly an effort to announce it, the five ways? Is it, is that truly an effort on the part of the board? Like an extraordinary effort? Or are you disappointed with the results that you get from the five ways that you announce?
I'm not sure of the effort involved because Nate handles it, but I know we pay to put it in the newspaper.
Which is reasonable.
We send out a mailer, which costs money. We do a reverse nine-one-one call.
Yep.
Yes.
We put it on the bulletin board, the electronic board.
Yep.
And.
We even make calls at the meeting to get people to come.
Right, so.
Which is not mandated now.
Yeah.
But we have done that.
My point is that the, it's not gyrations to do that. It's reaching out through your public means of communication. And we're disappointed in the results that we get in terms of the attendance, despite those methods that we use. So I don't, I, I think it's not fair to call them gyrations.
And we are trying a variety of different things. Like, I released the entire schedule for special town meeting ahead of anything this year. So we are going to try different things.
I saw that, I did call your office today because I did note that the town, the special town meeting and the elections are not on the calendar.
Yep, and now they are. You had spoke to Tony in my office. And when I got back from my appointments, I did end up throwing them on.
I just thought that was a nice place, an easy place to reference, and I appreciate you adding those, thank you.
Okay, who was next for the second time round? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just one comment about another gyration that you could do. It always used to be that town warrants were sent in the mail. They were mailed out. They were big documents like this that could easily be put on a refrigerator and.
No, they're.
I realize it costs money.
Yep.
Um, but I do think they're effective in getting people there, and they could also be combined. There's a lot of news that happens in this town. Nate's been putting out a lot of information. They could be combined with other, other information.
This isn't even half of what we send out. This is what's on the front. And then we put the information printed out. But this isn't half, there's another bigger stack. This is what everyone's going to get, there's other fun colors. And I know what you're talking about, the old school, it used to be the whole thickness, it was just too cost.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was cost prohibitive. So we have gone to the postcards, they used to be an actual postcard size, but now they're this size. People still say they don't get them. They get thrown out, because they do, they look like junk mail, because I'm going to lie, they look like junk mail.
So it's kind of a waste of money if they just get thrown out.
Well, the other thing gets thrown out, too, because we would hear that people didn't get those as well, even though those were like a book. Um, but then we caught, it costs us so much money to do. I'm going to go put these back before Tony goes in.
It would be about three thousand dollars to send those out to the fifteen-hundred houses, about two dollars and some change apiece. And we would also need to likely go to a printing company to have it done and labeled appropriately to make the best use of our time. So it would probably be right around five thousand dollars when that were, we're using old paper. A staff member is printing them out. She actually printed those out early just because we announced that there was going to be a town meeting. And then we can send them out for a small percentage of what the general letter rate would be, because we do work with the post office to get them out.
And Nate, what's the cost roughly for a special town meeting?
For a special town meeting, it's not as expensive as one would think. About between twenty-five hundred and four thousand dollars, depending on how much work has to go into it. Because you do have to think about minute details, like, oh, when are the staff working on it? When, who has to come to this? Do we need a police officer? What do we need to send out? How many public hearings are we having? How often does it need to be posted in the newspaper? And so it's, it all adds up. It's not breaking the bank, not fifty thousand dollars, but it's a couple grand each time.
Mr. Chair, yes, speak.
Whoa.
Is there any more?
Did I, oh, yes.
I'll go after that.
I would just like to say, you know, after it's said to everybody, especially this gentleman right here had the best point on the whole evening. Why, why do we need to have nine? Just because it suits your propaganda to.
Why do we need a what?
Why do you need to change it to nine people? If there's only going to be fifteen people from the town in addition to you and people, then so be it. So be it. Like, why, what good is it doing? What is it changing? We're still having the same cost for the same amount of staff members still attending. And then we have less say in our own town. Regardless, okay, so we don't change it to Saturdays, and this is the day of the week, and this is the time, let me leave it at that. We should have the choice to be here if we can or if we can't, or if the topic piques our interest. It should be our choice. And there shouldn't be somebody cutting off at the door saying, oh, sorry, we're at capacity. That's just crazy. It's crazy. So maybe we don't need to change it, maybe we don't need to bring sweets in, or, or bring money to the local businesses to help get people here. But at the end of the day, it's our town, and we should have the right to be here or not be here. And I just don't find any good reason to make it a nine-person maximum.
It was never a maximum, it was.
Nine was never going to happen.
I was, I was, I was gonna, oh, okay, well.
It was presented, it was never ever gonna.
Okay.
It wasn't a maximum, it was a quorum, it's a minimum, it's a minimum.
A quorum.
Yeah.
A minimum, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I meant it's in the.
Yeah.
That's okay.
It should just be, it should be whoever comes regardless, and, you know, Mitch Shannon was absolutely right.
All right.
You guys shouldn't be able to pass anything up based on how many people are here.
Thank you. Ed.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate, uh, for the board to consider, uh, taking a, a, a vote on a specific nine-person quorum?
No.
So that.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but no, it wouldn't be, it's not necessary. It was never, it was never a possibility, okay?
It would put closure to the item.
The moderator has blocked it, pretends that he did, like, or that they.
It never even got to the moderator, so it never even made a, we never even voted on it.
Yeah.
Right.
There's no action to be taken.
There was not enough support to bring forward to the moderator, so.
Yeah.
It would give the town anybody's individual, uh, take a vote.
Well, I would respectfully disagree, disagree with you on that, but.
Okay. I respect, I, I respect your argument.
Okay. Sir. Peter, uh, come, just a minute.
Paul, again, so to pick up on Ed's point, I, I like it frankly, I like clarity. I've always found that to be a good policy when you're on a board. Don't leave things ambiguous, people will mumble and jumble, and, oh, well, they didn't do anything, and who knows what.
But sir, it's not ambiguous, it stopped the minute he said no.
Right, but the general, the general people in town aren't gonna get that, believe me, they're not gonna get that.
Didn't make it to that.
Well. Then we go talking about the same thing, getting the word out.
I've done this, I know they won't get it. No offense to the citizens of Hubbardston, mind you, but they won't get it. At a minimum, and I'm not quite sure this is procedurally correct, if you don't want to take a vote, and the board certainly has the prerogative to take a vote on any issue it wishes to vote on, maybe table it.
So sir, the first two minutes of this meeting, or if you go back and look, will be much more powerful than a vote. Like each select board member, one by one, went through and let their, their voices be known at the beginning of the meeting prior to any further discussion.
Let Peter talk.
Peter.
Oh, God, let Peter talk.
Well, I'm trying to be fair to the people who are here too. Peter, go ahead.
Sure.
Now he's not gonna remember what he wants to say.
So, no, so I did hear, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, okay? Well, let me put it this way, I'm an older gentleman, grew up sixties, seventies, one parent worked, okay? The other one was a caretaker around the house. And that's how we voted back in the day, you know, town meetings and that, right? And it's still the same way now, but now you have two parents working with kids that take care, and I don't know how you make the time to make it to the meetings, that's, that's all I can bring it up. Today's, what do they call, I don't know, millennials or that era, they're very busy, and I understand that. Some, some people might travel an hour or two or three to get to work, hour and a half, take the tea, whatever they gotta do. Um, they're, they're not gonna go to a meeting when they get out, get home, they're gonna be beat down tired. Something needs to change, I, I don't know what, I don't have any answer, but I do feel that something needs to change with that aspect. You know, you've got two working parents and kids in childcare, and you get home, you have dinner, you sit on the couch and you're done for the night, you can't eat, because if you eat, you're gonna get tired, and you're done.
Saturday night dinner party, I don't know.
That's all I wanted to say, you know, I mean, something has to change, because everybody's so busy now.
Okay, is there anyone else who, some final words before that town moderator, that's a final word, sir?
I have the same words again in a different format. The board can vote on anything it chooses to vote on. A board member could make a motion, free form, to say something to the effect that I suggest, or I make a motion, that this board no longer, uh, does no more exploratory work to change the quorum for the town meeting, and if there's a second, it will be voted on.
I'll second that.
No.
That's not how that works.
Who's town council here? Who's town council?
Well, no, town council isn't here, town council said, very matter of fact, that if our town moderator is not inclined, we have no say, and he, point blank, that's.
I understand that, I, I understand that he's the ultimate gatekeeper, he can sit by a truck tomorrow, there's someone new here next Tuesday, he has a different view.
Yes.
No offense to the moderator.
Well, we'd have to elect.
Thank you.
But someone.
Please don't get it by a poster or anything.
That's how much trouble it's that gave you.
Watch out for the fear of the lady.
Hold it, please, you're asking us to, to vote that, that we'll never talk about this again, basically, that's just, and that's.
No, I, I suggest that you make a vote.
We don't need a vote, it's dead in the water.
To pursue changing the quorum outside of the, of the mechanism.
The town wants to hear from the five of you.
Someone can make that motion, that's a fact. Anyway, is there anyone on the board that has the gumption to do that and have the board vote if there's a second?
I don't.
I don't think it's, it's appropriate.
It's not, it's, I don't think that's a.
It's not a question of appropriateness, I, sir, I, I've been on most every board in this town in the past, I know you can do that.
So let me see if I can help here, Mr. Moderator, or Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Yeah.
Yes or no? You can tell me no.
You can make the motion, but if it's not seconded, I'm not, we're not gonna go any further.
It's not a question if you can do it.
So, so, I, I'm gonna be making a motion, I'd like to make a motion that the board tonight continues to support the fifty, uh, resident quorum that we currently have.
I will second that, there we go, that's a good one, very smart.
The motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes, opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you.
Renee, can the town moderator have the final word?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, I just wanna conclude my, uh, my comments here. And, um, make clear my strong exception to a statement that was made about me at the select board meeting of five September twenty twenty-three. Uh, in discussing the quorum reduction proposal, a member of the select board said, and I quote, "Maybe he's very frustrated, maybe he's not frustrated, maybe he doesn't care, he's getting paid anyway." I want to make clear to this board, to all present, and all will review this later, that I do care about Hubbardston. I have never done anything to beg the question of any of you, I hope that I don't care about Hubbardston. That's why my wife and I chose and choose to live here. I care, and I express that caring by serving as town moderator, a position that I view as an honor and a privilege. I take the fair conduct of town meeting seriously, I try and treat everyone with respect, um, and I think that that's very important. I've been an educator, excuse me, for seventeen years, I've taught law, civics, US history, and world history. A highlight of my day is when I stand enthusiastically with my baritone in my classroom for the pledge of allegiance. And I have as moderator reversed past practice and have started each annual special town meeting with a salute to the flag. I created a social studies elective called Citizenship in Action to encourage our young people to become involved in government, that their voice, their thoughts, and their votes matter. I've been a four-term state legislator, I have served as a county sheriff for ten years. I've been active in the public square for forty years, and in every position I have held, either elected or appointed, I have conducted myself honestly, with integrity and professionalism. I care for this town and her residents, each of them. Seeing and hearing the comments that were made that night at that meeting in light of not knowing me personally, just a professional relationship, noting the ease by which those disparaging remarks were made was nothing less than shocking. We who serve the public owe them the best that we can bring to the table. We all have different gifts, however impassioned we become, however galvanizing the issue, we must do so with a sense of civility that will not only reflect well upon us, but reaffirm the sacred bond and trust we have with those who have entrusted us with public office. Mr. Walker, I was shocked with your comments, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, and, 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 excuse me, and that is, you know, I don't do this for the hundred-dollar stipend, and that's before taxes.
All right, we appreciate all of you for taking the time to be here and, uh, taking the time to speak to us, we thank you, and.
See you at town meeting.
See you at town meeting.
See you at, yeah, town meeting, yes.
October twenty-sixth.
We'll take a brief recess, if you can get in, although you wanna leave, and then we'll resume.
There's not enough time to resume the warrant, is there? You go home.
See you later, nice to see you.
Renee. Thank you.
Oh, yes, absolutely, I'm very welcome.
Thanks, Renee.
Of course.
I'm glad you came, even though I just made it myself, I say the wrong word.
You said there's a sign up for emails?
Yes, on the town website, there's a little tab that says subscribe. Subscribe.
Okay. Um, and these committees you keep mentioning.
All of the above.
I'm very limited, I've been up straight, so I'm really, really.
So right under, right in the same little area as subscribe, on the top is job slash volunteer. Click that, we try our best to keep them up to date. That's a permanent opportunity, sorry. Right here, volunteer positions. That's where it's listed, that's how you apply, you can apply in paper, you can apply via web form.
Now, which one is the fire and police, which one is the?
The ceiling, the lights, skies, mirrors, rain.
Electricity.
So there, if.
I forget that fancy word.
So, the, the board in which you would be able to have a say about electricity, finance, and police would be the finance committee.
Attention, I know, Steve.
Well, by the way, no one ever. Say no one ever.
The public, public safety committee is full right now.
Don't worry, I'm the first to be fired.
I don't know, bring you on that.
Public Safety Building?
Yeah.
Mike Foley carries.
Sacramony.
Sacramony.
Um, what's his face?
Mike Stoll.
Seth Knight.
Seth Knight.
Uh, chief and chief, you, Heather, uh, Ben Pearl, uh, the public safety committee, who's on it?
What are we talking about?
Chiefs.
Yeah, both chiefs, Heather, Knight, Mike and Mike Foley, and Stoll.
Uh. Yeah, yeah.
Who are these people on fire?
These are all.
And what police, all?
Yeah, there's both chiefs.
Really?
Fire chief from, um, the other town, Seth.
Right, is Seth Knight, he's a town resident.
And the select board did vet them, we had a good amount of people apply to that.
Yeah.
Or two variety.
But there's both chief of police here and a fire chief here as well.
Which you like, Monty.
So there's fire, there's chief, and then there's other, a town resident that's also a chief of the town.
Okay. Um, um, I'm watching my father who has dementia.
A weekend's.
Yeah.
Anything, the meetings are on YouTube, all of them, so even the public safety meetings, if you wanna fun time, you know, you can watch any of these meetings.
I did watch it, I found them to be very entertaining.
I watched them, it's.
And I can kinda see where people came, watched, what, uh, wasn't here.
I love them live, I love them. Yeah. Yeah, it's all.
Some of those comments were pretty weird to talk.
Yeah, there usually are. There's, there's always some, but it's just part of, unfortunately, being in the spotlight. So the, the more you are in the spotlight, the harder you get whipped under the bus for reasons that are yours and some that aren't yours. You know, whatever.
Living that, that's for sure.
Okay, so we wanna reconvene now to, and get on to the, um, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You have a good night, drive safe.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, the item five, we're gonna jump over because they're, they're not here, and.
Yeah, I will speak with them regarding why they weren't here.
So we'll.
Oh, they didn't show at all?
No.
Okay.
And they were supposed to send us some stuff and they didn't.
Okay.
That's not looking favorable.
Okay, so we'll move over to the consent agenda, first of all, you have the approval of minutes, um, that's, this was the goal meeting, so we were all present July twentieth, twenty twenty-three, wage authorization for Mary Makowski, finance, treasurer collector, thirty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents per hour. Uh, so, so we're making a, a motion to approve.
There's more on the backside.
On the backside.
Oh. No?
Oh, there's, Jeff, there was a added DPW employee and a cultural council member today.
Okay. Right there, yeah, okay. Is this a new employee, Ben?
Oh.
Yes.
Good, okay, so he's a new hire.
Connie, okay, appointments, Connie, strict matter, cultural council member, appointed until six-thirty-twenty-seven.
Yep. Strict.
With that in mind, would someone make a motion to approve?
Connie does have chair breaker's approval.
Are there any holds on any, or any questions on any of those items?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept, any questions, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, uh, on the new business, um, we need a motion, uh, I don't know what's in, they need a motion to close the, uh, uh, special town meeting warrant, right? Or what is that?
Yep, that's closing the October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three special town meeting warrant. We had the warrant open to the general public and to staff for about two weeks' time. We, I didn't get any outside of the regular kind of cookie cutter, what we need to do requests from anybody.
So there's no holds for the egg accessory?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay.
No holds, meaning they're not holding it, or it's not?
They're gonna wait, they're gonna wait until annual.
Was there anything from zoning?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, um, so can we have a motion to close the special town meeting?
I make a motion to close this, uh, October twenty-sixth special town meeting.
Second.
Agenda, agenda, right?
No, no agenda.
No.
Warrant.
The warrant.
Oh, the warrant, okay.
Second for discussion?
Uh, motion made and seconded, there is discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Chris, did you wanna go first?
No, you're ladies in the fourth channel.
Okay, that's so kind of you. Uh, Nate, so October twenty-sixth, so that's a Thursday.
Thursday night.
Okay.
It's actually the exact same day as we had town meeting, special town meeting last year.
Okay, and do we end up on, I don't remember why we ended up on Thursday night, was it availability?
You weren't here, it was.
But that's why I don't remember it.
Yeah, it was the availability of Candace versus the elections that are in that, in that area, and made sense with the timeline for which we would have had to post, advertise, hold the hearing, and have the meeting.
So now I'm gonna ask a question based on our earlier conversation, um, that went on for about an hour, and the question is, do we have any concerns about getting a large enough turnout on a Thursday night as opposed to our usual night?
I don't think Thursday compared to Tuesday is a big, in my two cents, I don't think it's gonna make a huge difference, those two different days.
Okay.
It's still a weeknight.
That's my only question.
Okay, anything, any other questions or discussion on that?
Yeah, can we talk about article five, this seventy-five hundred dollars for a home replacement?
Yes.
Well, wait, uh.
So this is a very, very, very rough draft, you guys are gonna get the opportunity, this is me giving you a sneak peek at what was going on, and that was the seventy-five hundred dollars that when the representatives from the Quabbin Regional School District visited, they had mentioned that we would need to come up with.
No, he was talking about.
Inside the.
Oh, the warrant.
I gave a very draft, very early draft version.
Well, what is, what is our share, our share, who, who, who's the other share, Quabbin Regional School District?
The other share was Quabbin Regional School District, and it was, uh, thirty-five hundred. I have to finalize with them, like I said, this is very rough, and we will have backup information on everything by the time it is in front of you.
Thank you.
I zoomed it in.
So these are mostly placeholders at this point?
At this point, I would consider them placeholders, they're.
Yep.
At this point, I would consider them placeholders. They're a little more than that, but.
You don't anticipate, but the idea of closing the warrants, we're not gonna add to the docket here, but we could always amend and endorse, subtract.
Yep. Absolutely. And this is a very early version. I would just, I had it done, so I figured it wouldn't hurt to release it to let you guys know what I was thinking. I had heard a few people on the internet say, oh, they're trying to shove a, an override in at this special town meeting. So I also wanted to provide that this special town meeting at this moment, at this moment of closure is relatively mundane. We can discuss the articles at length during the time period and discussion about them in the coming weeks.
The best is the dollar amount that they, somebody keeps kicking around saying ten million dollar and it's like, on what planet? That's our, what's, that's, that's the yearly, what, how? No, that's not even, nope, okay.
Nice to have that trouble.
Yeah, I know.
That kind of money.
I guess I'm not recollecting the conversation about this pump.
Sorry.
Or what it is or.
Yeah.
What we're replacing.
It goes with the boiler, right?
No, it does not go with the boiler. Remember when the school had the water issue?
Yes.
Well, the school had a water issue and when they went in to fix the water issue, it went above the threshold for where the town will have to pay. I'm waiting for more information from them. It is currently a placeholder of sorts. I will bring information forth in great detail at a future meeting.
So we haven't seen the full thing yet, Chris. That's why you don't recollect it, 'cause we haven't seen it. We just know that it's gonna be there.
In the select board, we'll have the option to turn down any of the proposed articles. I'm, I'm just putting up what's been brought to my attention.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion on the floor. Any other questions? If not, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried. Um, a special senate election primary warrant, do we need that?
We still gotta do the general, oh, no, wait, general, uh, this, yeah, special senate, sorry. I apologize. That's what I was talking about, but I was reading the wrong line. I apologize.
Yeah.
Chair, there will be a special senate election on, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, from seven AM to eight PM. This is the election, this is the primary election to select a Republican to move forward and run for the seat vacated by Ann Goby.
So we need a motion then?
Yes.
To clo- open?
To sign it.
To sign it, okay. I'd like to make a motion to sign the general by, I'm reading the wrong line again, excuse me, special senate election primary warrant.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Posed? Motion passed.
I checked off the Quabbin Chiller. That's why I wanted to go to that next line.
Yeah. That's our gun.
I know.
Okay, uh, so is there something we need to sign?
Yes, at the end of the meeting, we'll sign everything. There's six copies.
Okay, fine, then town, town administrators report then.
Uh, I will rope the general bylaw review into this. It is with great sorrow that Candace and I announced that there were no applicants for the general bylaw review committee and we request that we just hold off until the charter noted twenty twenty-seven. There will always be the opportunity to make general bylaw reviews per the original channels at town meeting, but at this time, there was not enough people to form a committee.
All right, um.
Sure, I know.
First, our fire department and DPW crews were able to lend mutual aid to the towns of Lemur and Princeton as they dealt with significant damage from recent heavy rains. I appreciate all their hard work and willingness to go above and beyond. The capital improvement projects are due by September twenty-eighth. Anybody at home or that is an employee, please take the time to consider what you think the town would need. The veteran service officer now has office hours on Thursday from ten-thirty to twelve at the Slade Building. Here, I've been working with Lauren to find different ways to have her work with the community since the chapter one fifteen benefits are, are very, very low as renting your home is a part of the formula. So we do not have any of those right now. We are currently putting together a green communities grant application focused on upgrading the library HVAC, HVAC system and the school lighting. It was a fantastic tour in the pouring rain, so that was, yeah, that was good. We're also, also working with a few people to put together a community compact package that talks about training and potential money-saving automization issues. So we'll, I'll have that at a meeting in the future. The Hubbardston Lions Club has requested that we save the date for Sunday, October first at four PM as they will be hosting a dedication ceremony for their new pavilion in Hubbardston in the Curtis Rec, Recfields. I'd like to thank the Lions ahead of that and I look forward to being there.
What was the time and date of that?
October first at four. I sent you a calendar.
That's clear, Saturday.
By.
The Sunday.
The Recfield.
Are you having food?
For what?
Your husband is very excited about this bike ride that he, that he's been inviting me to on that same day, so.
Oh, is it on the first?
Yeah.
So it's.
I have to go to the bike ride.
Dedication of the building, right, yeah.
Yeah.
But there won't be food at the dedication? What about refreshments?
Would like to praise the fire department for their swift work in putting out a propane truck fire last week. It was pretty crazy. They quickly got down there, quickly sent out a reverse nine-one-one call and got the work done.
That's a dangerous journey, a propane truck. I bet it exploded, you know, I'm getting phone calls, they're like, stay in your house. I'm like, what's this? It's not just putting out a fire, it's dangerous.
I think things are pretty good. Things are heating up for the budget. I began, well, I'm actually almost done my forecast, but I don't wanna give it to you guys too early and create that expectation. So I'm working towards, towards that stuff and everyone's been doing quite well. I'm happy to see it. That's my report for today. If you wanted to check out the full version, it is on the website.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the TE report? Okay, are going on? I don't believe we have any policies to, to review. Matt is not reasonably interested by the chair. I do not have any. Does anyone have, or wish to?
Oh, can I give one more thing?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we had good attendance at the open meeting law training held by myself, Candace and the, and Carolyn Murray of KP Law last Thursday. It lasted about three hours. Next time I'm going to aim to keep it at two, but there were great conversations, great questions, and I felt it was very valuable to the people in attendance.
Thank you. Yes, it was. Uh, okay, um, then public press, nothing, so would someone like to say?
To move.
Second.
To adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.